And we're ready when you are, Vice Chair Smith.
Okay. We call the work session to order, the March twentieth noon. And the topic on hand is one that has come up several times on prior PACAB discussions. We have a lengthy packet of the South Harbor uplands and future Harbor Master office plans. So with that, we have Norman, Tony present. Would you like to take that away, what the intentions are here and where PACAB can address any concerns, comments, or do any work for you guys?
So part of the pack is also that we put in for the height limit. I remember some, I think, foremembered, was on the committee then, I think, on board, when we adjusted the height limit, kind of like the rest of the harbor along the edge. So that was already been approved by council. So that's one thing done. The main thing that needs to happen on the upland to start anything is to move that, the electric over into the utility easement. It's right now, it's right where the buildings go to boardwalk will be. So it's got to be moved over into the utility easement. And then, then you can almost go out and get the lots planted and then figure out how you're going to put in a lift station for all the sewer. Because the one that's up there is not big enough for more, one more building.
Could I ask a question? So you just mentioned structural height. So is it, you're saying it's 26 feet in that area?
It was, the resolution should be in the packet when it was approved. I think it was the same height as, actually, you were working at community development when we did.
Right, right. So I know maximum height's 34, right? And then there was a provision where around the basin it was 26 for, at least a certain area.
I believe it is 26 for the harbor, the harbor area. They have like containment there where it's only 26 feet.
And would that, would that maximum height apply to this proposed structure on the uplands?
Yes.
Unless you apply for bearings.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see advantages to having something higher, right? Visibility.
Mm-hmm. Periscope.
Navigation reference for people approaching the harbor.
Right. Well, the thing is, is so you can't, you can't do that. That's why the Mariners Memorial wanted to put lights on there. And they can't because some boat might see it in. So you can't, you've got to be careful with the lights up there. That was one of the core engineers things when they went in for that thing. Can't put, no.
That's a good point. I guess it does look like a navigational aid too.
Yeah.
So the, obviously, there's a lot of vehicle traffic in that area. That doesn't interfere with navigation or doesn't.
Yeah. Red and green, so.
And then, just going back to the, since we've mentioned the Mariners Memorial too, I guess I don't see a zoning map, but is the, is the.
Auto commercial.
Divided between park and harbor commercial or?
Oh, auto commercial, I believe. They were trying to make that a park, but I don't remember.
I think the southern, there might be a diagram in there. The north, the north side of the lot was, was commercial and then the south side was designated park.
Yeah. Is that okay for your operations?
Yeah, so it's just, we just got to maintain parking. Remember, we did the launch ramp. We promised the state and the feds that we have enough parking for 25 years, but, you know, that we're supposed to maintain enough parking for that launch ramp, so.
On busy summer days, I'm sure if you notice, that parking lot is absolutely full with overflow and very creative parking techniques. How, and I think that it would be reasonable to anticipate that the demand for visiting Seward and boating out of here is only going to increase if anything. How will this development affect that? I would assume it's going to have to.
So the building's going to be closer to the water, kind of like what's along the harbor now. And then you're going to have some parking there in front of, next to the buildings, but you're not going to have nothing but boats. The boats will be in like the first row for kind of on the easement, I would think. But they were also talking about, instead of campgrounds at Boulder Stadium, they'd be off parking, or Boulder, I'm sorry, I called it by, we play softball there.
Boulder Field.
Boulder Field, yeah. Yeah, it's.
So just speaking to the square footage, your current space, I assume, is undersized and you would like something a little bigger?
A little bit bigger, yes. And then kind of a meeting room, definitely need a meeting room because, I mean, my office is smaller, tiny, and then his office isn't very big either. So, yeah, definitely a meeting room would be nicer, you know, nice in there too, so.
And then you probably have ideas on what might happen to the old building?
So there was talk about, we still need to make, we still need to have a shop so we can maybe tear down that building and build a shop, but then have, open up another area that could be leased out to somebody. And there was talk about maybe a laundromat facility and place to lock up luggage for folks, you know, privatize that, somebody can lease it out and do that. But we just still got to need a shop down in the harbor area. So, and most of that building has been mitigated for asbestos, but there's still some. So the bathrooms where you're done, all that stuff is all mitigated. So I imagine all our old tile is that's there, kind of like, you know, this place used to have it here. So you can have, you know, asbestos mitigation when you, when it does come down, but.
And I would guess your, it's a very popular washroom in the Harbor Master Building.
And we can expand it, have more showers, you know, rebuild a whole new building, have new showers where the women's room can, used to only have one, but now when we redid the bathrooms, it has two now. But it should have four, you know, men should have four, or six and six, whatever.
Is there some reason the lights are out?
No.
Could we turn the lights on?
The sun was out earlier, so.
Huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You want my glasses, or?
No, I can use them while I got glasses.
And then additionally, you mentioned maybe the possibility of laundry facilities, which I.
For B, so I would recommend laundry facilities just for boat owners. But actually, I talked to the one up here, she would, you know, you have to go out to RFP to run it, but, you know, recommend a facility for, you know, when the fishermen come in or people leave their boats in the summer. I think we have five, five in winter, roughly, five people in winter. And, you know, they can go to laundromat. But I think also what's needed down there is a storage facility for people luggage. That's where we find the biggest one. I know they have to go all the way down to the train wreck, which is going to be going away to store luggage. So you can buy, you know, rent those key things and that's something the city can do or private enterprise can do there. So there's definitely a.
Yeah, that's a good point. There's currently some coach staging and loading that takes place.
When they, people come down to catch the bus to go to Denali or whatever, they wait there all day sitting on their luggage. They want to go do things. We can get, people are doing things, we have to place them to store their luggage.
And I assume that Pavilion Park that's there in front of the Harbor Master Building down to the north, that would just be, remain and not be affected?
Oh, you're talking about the plaza?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely stay because of the earthquake memorial's there.
Is there a timeline on when this is going to be built or is this still funding that you're trying to get through?
Well, like I said, if we can get that electric moved over, things can move a lot faster. And then the next portion, you know, move the electric over, but then we've got to get public works in there to do a lift station, have gravity fed to one corner, and then you're going to have to have a lift station to push it down to that little brown building. It's not very far, but you can go there, but you can gravity feed it there, will save a lot of money, but then he has to have a pump to push it from there.
Is there a proposed lift station location in mind or?
Probably right there in that corner, as you come up the hill there on the left-hand side, that'd be the perfect spot for it. It's not much, good for parking and anything, so. I don't, I think it has to be very big, like maybe the, like the one the size of Napa or even that one, that brown building a little further down, that's another little lift station.
So the existing one would be?
It just needs to be able to gravity feed to it, all the, all the places, you know, through, and straight into easement so that it can come right down to the easement, right to that location. But that, you know, that's probably going to be the most expensive part of everything.
I was just thinking about, you know, the, the existing Harbor Master Building and the businesses along the boardwalk that rim the harbor basin, would that design or concept be extended to the uplands? And, and I don't know if that's even a concept or not, just.
So we were, we talked about this before at PACAB, we're going to keep the same lot size as all those other ones have. And you could probably purchase two and then come back to prior planning, don't need to combine the two lots if you want a bigger building. That's something that can be done. But we're trying to, you know, you know, there's people that want to do, you know, more fishing charters, you know, kayak stuff, and there's plenty of people out there, they just, you know.
No, I was late, you're cheering.
You're back now.
I don't know if you went over it in the two minutes that I was late, but wasn't there a electrical relocation issue?
That's what we were talking about, move the electric over.
That was a quick discussion, I missed it.
Yeah. The electric's in the way where all the building's going to go and the boardwalk. So, and it's actually on the old Breakwater site. Years ago, I think when Carrie Anderson was Harbor Master, I went out and SBS and got a quote to do a complete boardwalk there. So it's the boardwalk, but like I said, the electric's, I don't know who did it, it wasn't me, and it was put right in the way of everything.
Right.
I think it was because maybe the Corps, because the Corps owned the uplands at the time.
But that wouldn't affect this project?
It, it would, it has to move.
Oh, okay, so that's a process.
Because you can't build a building on the electric.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's first.
Yeah, it has to move into the utility easement and at the same time.
And we've been working on that for quite a long while.
We're trying to get it moved, find, find the funds to move it. And I made a suggestion, a couple suggestions to move it and, so.
This might propel it a little bit.
Well, yeah, we talked about it before about, and it has to go before council to approve it, but every now and then, I don't know when, but I don't want to stick, because electric's a little hot subject right now, you get a kickback from two gatch, you could take that money, move it over, move the fund, move the electric over into the utility easement. And that would open up more, for more businesses, more revenue for the city and all that, so. That's it, it's up, like I said, bring it before council, it's up to council to make that decision.
A couple more, I see, I don't see a lot of, I do see a lot of detail in the building, not a whole lot, what I call general, general arrangement, except a couple photographs that shows the location, proposed location.
So that, that was there as the Harbor Masters from Homer, Harbor Masters Office from Homer. We just, I just asked them to send it over because I have, we have nothing.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you already had some grand.
No, 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 it's really a nice building, if you've ever been down there, it's really nice the way they got it laid out. But ours is unique of where you're going to put it, where you can see most of the harbor in the transient locations. That's the thing.
Let me ask you, Norm, do you, do you imagine coming back and visiting this sort of architectural statement rather than just a square building?
Well, we want to make sure it's nice, I mean, you know.
This is nice.
Yeah, it's nice, it's rounded and rounded in one corner, like I said, but, you know, and then Tony came up with a great idea too about where the location is, we can actually go up a little higher, get to, go up a little higher, we have a thing that we can see at the other end of the harbor.
Oh, yeah.
Two stories would be really good.
Yeah.
Just to give you greater visibility, both like out in the bay and then into the harbor if you have to do that, because 26 feet's plenty, plenty of space to go for two stories.
And sometimes now, we get a phone call or a radio, a boat coming into harbor, want to know where it can go, we have to send a guy out in the field to look and see where that, we can't even see the water from our building now. So we have to send a guy out in an X and Z float to see, boat came in at night or whatever, is there a spot open for it, the lengths, all that stuff, so.
So why would this building, would you imagine some covered, parking, some indoor parking, maybe two stalls or something like that?
I wouldn't do it in the Harbor Masters Office, no. No, we have probably public restrooms, probably not showers because the showers would be in the other location. But it's definitely, we have public restrooms up there now, you know, we can come off of that building because it's right there, some, somewhere's up there, we just got to find the right location up there.
What's going to happen to the old space?
The old Harbor Masters Office? So we're talking about, definitely got to have a shop, then put me, I would suggest they tear it down.
Yeah.
Build a new shop, build a new restroom, bigger restrooms, and then, like I said, things to store luggage.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, should be good, perfect for right there.
Yeah.
And definitely the, a covered awning for the folks standing waiting for the buses.
Yeah.
Because it's, that is, you know, a ranger on here, so they use it a lot, the whole front of the thing is just packed with people waiting for the buses in the morning.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a good idea, there's some complimentary services that you could certainly, you know, design for. I'm wondering out loud here what the lease revenues look like for the current boardwalk.
Tony was actually getting those and it was.
We could go off our current numbers as a rough idea, it would be 12, 12 stalls.
Yeah.
Or 12 buildings, depending on how, if we took a stall or two for Harbor Master Shop or went on the other side of, like what that horseshoe was proposed.
You have 10, so you say, we could say 12 lease sites, easy. So that's, and they were running?
Seven.
Seven. So you have that income coming in for the harbor and, and finance, because we split all the revenue on leases, so just throw that out there. And then, but then you're going to have shops, so some of these places have four, they have a housing on top and then three or four little shops down below. So all that, different shops is bringing in revenue taxes.
Sure.
Did you say housing?
There's, people have houses on the second floor. They rent out, this one school teacher lived down the harbor right when they first did in 2001, and I think he just moved out last year. And, yeah, he finally bought himself a house, but he moved out last year and they got another school teacher in there right now. And it, yeah.
Above Coho Joe's.
Above Coho Joe's, yeah.
Above Coho Joe's.
Yeah. And then also Joe Tugus' property, where old, renowned Char's used to be, there's an apartment up there.
Are there limitations on those at all? I mean, two bedroom or?
Just got to meet, meet zoning code, codes.
Is zoning pretty open there?
It's very commercial, right, auto commercial.
I think it's auto commercial, so yeah, it's as open as it gets.
Mm-hmm.
So would there be an impact with the, with the building, the, I know there's parking there now accessing that float, whatever that, that ramp that goes down there is called. These people would have to be displaced, they'll go, they'll, they'll walk farther, their carts, they'll have to carry their.
Talking about the transient float on S float?
I guess that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be like a fire lane there, so we have to have a fire lane. And it's still going to be open, they've got people going to park like they do now, but they're just going to have to park a little further.
Probably everything in the north would be open?
Yeah, well, it's still the same thing, you just, you've got to maintain the fire lane, but the parking is, you know, and then some, those people parked down by the bathrooms and they walk down to their vessels.
Norm, I guess I'm a little confused then, this is, this is the only thing that I'm going off of, this photograph with a red line square.
Yeah.
And it encompasses the Mariners Memorial and also the sanitation facility there.
Uh-huh.
So where in that area would you propose the building to be?
So that's, I would, I would personally put it in this far corner, far north.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I would put it, but an engineer would look at it because the septic's right there, water's right there, but just, you know, then you can see vessels coming in and out of the harbor.
Right.
If you move it over to the left, you'd be able to see down, you know, that location there, you can see all the way down Z float, X float. But is it big enough? Can you build there? Things like that, I mean, that's something an engineer would.
Why couldn't you build it?
You could, you'd be an engineer, because you have that rock wall.
Yeah.
You have to pull the rock out and build, you know, like, kind of like, so the Mariners Memorial, when they did that, encompassed a lot of rock.
Anything that has to do with the breakwater structures.
Yeah, the core of engineers is going to be involved.
Yeah.
But there, is there any, is there any consideration, as vital as the Harbor Master Office is, is there any consideration about title, the criticality of tsunami?
Well, with a new tsunami map, none of us are safe.
Right.
Well, I think you could build four.
Do you think you could build four?
I think you could build four.
If you do two stories, that's also another factor, and if you build a building, I mean, they also have those evacuation sites now that they're building on top of buildings in tsunami areas where you use, you know, if you have a footprint for your bottom and then you have a, you know, smaller footprint for your top structure, then you usually, a lot of times you can build out that, rest of the roof section for like an escape area and they build it as a secondary kind of.
Did a lot of that in Japan there.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would think we want to maintain that facility through a tsunami event.
Well, I wouldn't want to be there.
No, I don't mean that, I think you want to go back to it. After it passes, you want to go back to it.
Right, so it's made where the bottom section can get washed out?
Sure.
And it's like you're saying, the top section remains.
No, I'd be, I'd be going to the hills, I agree with you. But I'd want to go back the next day when we need to get back in the business, rather than a year down the road or work out of a tent. So that's just really a simple matter of engineering, but it should be, I think, one of, one of your bullet points for something appealing, you know, that says a statement, welcome to Seward, this is the front door to Seward. Not that way. So make, make that clear and, of course, efficient. Doesn't have to be too complicated to be energy efficient.
There are some notes in here about overnight occupancy maybe being prohibited due to the tsunami risks.
So, yeah, so we, we don't allow, we allow people that own their own boats to stay in the harbor, but no B and Bs, no VRVOs in the harbor.
Well, that would, that include like boardwalk development or?
No, that's allowed.
Well, in that area?
Up on the uplands only, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it's allowed in the harbor, auto commercial, you get to all the hotels right there too, so.
Yeah, this is a note, it says, threat of landslide tsunami damage may be such that overnight occupancy in any function should be prohibited by intention and code. That's, I think that might be referring yet to the proposed camping sites, which may be another discussion we move to here, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, is that area being out there, has that been looked at as something that might be more impacted by a potential tsunami than the natural shoreside of Seward? Might actually be safer, when I think about it as well.
Yeah.
So I just, I do have a question about that. So this, this uplands is, it's all fill, right?
It's all dredged materials from, when they, when they expanded the harbor each week.
So is that, is that considered very stable property then?
Yeah, because, yeah, it'd be really nice until you get to the rock.
Until you get to the rock.
Get to the breakwater part, it'd be easy to dig and, and all that other stuff, so.
I think there's actually been two stages of construction there. The original fill was ripped, gone back and reinforced by the Corps. I think there was.
That was all fishing area. So right along this, that edge there, that was the, the old breakwater's still there. This was where people fished. And then when they made this other breakwater and they dredged that big section over here, that's where all the fill went. And then whatever the remaining kind of went to, well, it was Louis Mountain at the time.
Just, just following up on that, you know, with the, with the harbor footprint used to be and then, of course, the expansion and the addition of those uplands, I mean, how many years out before we, you know, establish another seawall to add on to your harbor and maybe build southward? I mean, it's, are you full or are you, do you see an expansion?
Tony brought that up, we talked about it. So there's a salmon stream right there. So you can only go to the salmon stream, you can't right there.
No.
You can only go, and that's not very big.
Yeah.
To the expansion. And we can't go towards the railroad.
Well, and of course, that, that Scheffler Creek drainage is a construct, it's not, it's not going to be moved, but I understand your point.
The salmon culvert?
Yeah. The, the plans that they originally had that were like built in like the seventies actually did have the harbor like extending all the way like down. If you look at the plan, it was crazy to see, the original idea was to have the harbor like way out into here and all this other stuff, and there was like an additional like building down in here to deal with that. And so it's pretty fascinating to see what the, what the original kind of idea of the sort of idea.
Would they have overlaid the, the original harbor that was destroyed? And that's about where it was, right?
Right.
So, yeah, it was just a, I've got pictures in my office of it, just a rock water and then, yeah.
Keep that counsel.
Like, after the quake, you know, all this fell in, it fell in, you know, during the quake. So this was out here further, and that's why you just see the pilings from that one freight dock, or not freight dock, it was a sawmill or, it was a sawmill or something.
Pretty safe to say that harbor footprint is, is as big as it's going to get?
Probably pretty close. I know that we're looking at doing a little expansion here with the Z float, so you guys seen that already? So, and then, yeah. With the railroad property owns, actually, our breakwater's on railroad property, so.
Could you, a refresher, remember what year was that moved? It was fairly recent, right?
2000, see, I guess, so this is 2008, so this is probably five, no, five, seven, trying to remember where Carrie was. So she left in 10, so probably 2006 or '07.
And they can't, you know, if they wanted to grow it, they can't redirect that salmon stream, that culvert, I mean, it's all just campground.
Yeah, I mean, it can be moved, it's just, you know, lots, lots of paperwork, I imagine, but it could be moved.
I mean, it is manmade anyway, so.
Or the, or, or, like you were saying, build a second harbor, I mean, like, do you know how many, how many harbors June's got, four or five?
Yeah.
So, you know, they could build a new harbor.
Oh, yeah.
But the other thing is, it gets pretty deep over here. Yeah, yeah. But really, like, all that center section, this is all manmade anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see like the original, like, you look at the old pictures, this was like the city dump right here.
Yeah.
And then this was, that was out.
Well, the city dump was down in Napa, but.
And, and they used to have, like you said, thin road, but that used to just be all open. It's pretty crazy to see how much has been constructed and built in there over, over the years.
Right.
Well, the long and short is this construction using that point of land wouldn't really jeopardize future expansion.
No.
I mean, it would either just jump over it and continue to the south.
Mm-hmm.
And with this then being in the center.
Yeah, it would be centrally located, which would be ideal to expand.
Or, or like a lot of other towns, have a second or third border.
Correct. Well, we have two now, we have Smick and.
We have two, but I think Juno and.
Juno has five.
Sitka all have two or three or four.
The word centrally located kind of. The word centrally located, kind of, your current location, if you're gonna dispatch a harbor worker from there, they, that's about as close as you can get to all points, right?
Correct.
So then you'll be further away from the bulk of the floats.
Well, the shop won't be, the Harbor Masters Office will be there, but the shop will be right kinda where they are now.
How will that affect workflow on a day-to-day basis? Do you have to, do, would you have personnel that would need to go out to some of the floats further north? You know, is that...
Well, yeah, so we, I mean, we walk those floats every day, we check floats every day, three sixty-five, so, and they, they, there's a, we can put in whatever route we want into the handheld, and they walk, you know, to go do whatever, and there's a project, they just gear up their stuff and go. We actually have sheds with some gears and pumps in it, so that's all spread out already.
Okay.
So we'd have to haul big equipment to certain areas in the harbor, like, over there on Z-float, we have a couple pumps already, and, you know, of course, fire equipment, fire equipment, and same thing down on E-float, we have bigger pumps and snow equipment and so, and then on, we have one on this side, too. We have equipment here just for this, so we, I mean, wherever we go, we can put out equipment, just the folks gotta drive to it. It's only a few of them driving, if anything.
So, so the days where, it's a snow dump in there right now, would there be any impact? They're using some of that area for snow dump.
Just on the south side of the road.
Right, and, and there wouldn't be any problem during heavy snow keeping access for the Harbor Department?
No, if, if, if it got to a point where, like, you know, I think Doug's been hauling snow out to the big snow dump now, be clearing some of the other areas, and then it'll come in and start, you know, when they get caught up at the, you know, the corners of the roads and stuff, they'll probably start coming hauling there and hauling that to the snow dump, like they did last year.
So, look, if, if you don't mind, jump down the road, two, two things. One is if, if we build the boardwalk with facilities through there, that'll impact that snow dump capability, correct?
No.
No?
No. So, here's the road coming down, snow dumps over here.
Yeah.
All the stuff's gonna be over here.
I see.
Starting there, so...
Okay, and the second thing, in, in the area where the Harbor Department is now, that area, I remember when it wasn't built up, and it is now, is there still a demand for more of those kinds of spaces? Like those individual charter companies and things like that?
Absolutely.
So if, if you build a, if you tore down existing harbor building, build a streamlined building with the bus stop and the shower facilities, is that what you're talking about?
No, that would be down, yeah, where the one is now.
So where the one is now?
Correct.
And so there would be some indoor stuff there, probably bathroom and things like that, but still, the whole Harbor Department would be available for lease, for the rest of it?
Well, no, we wanna keep a shop there.
We'll keep a shop.
We wanna keep a shop there.
So there would be an opportunity to find more lease spaces there.
Not where the old shop is.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what it's asking, I guess.
Well, there's probably a spot there, like I was saying, you can do the laundromat, or I think the store luggage. I mean, somebody can lease, you know...
We talked about that laundromat, and whether it would be operated by a contract person or by the city.
I would go with the contract.
I would, too, frankly.
We don't wanna compete with, can't compete with private enterprise.
No.
So a little earlier, you said something about having twelve spaces for lease or rent. What was, what were you referring to then?
So, so like here, we have all these little shops, like along the harbor, so the same thing here, all these little shops along the side.
Oh, okay, so on the upland?
Yeah.
Not, or the Harbor Masters Office is now?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I can't wait.
It's gonna go, I mean, there's a need for it, and I'm pretty sure you build them, and they're gonna, you put the land out there, they're gonna come. And I think a couple of people that already have shops wanna buy a couple out there already. They've talked about it.
So to make those available, that still boils down to needing to move the electric from the station in.
Gotta move the electric first, and then we can get it platted, and then, or getting platted, the lease will have it platted. So my suggestion, I explained it to Tony, because you all know, but we can do like we did, this, this was what, so this thing here, up to, I think, I might curiously believe was in on this, but all this, so what the city did was, the city put in water and sewer lines, and you can even do the same thing over there, put in the lift station, and then you have the people who leased those spots make payments for it. The city puts it all in, and they make payments back, and once it's paid for, your, your lease payments go down. Carl, Carl would be a perfect one to talk to, because he was, that's one of the things, yeah, he's glad they did that, because we just have all those building warrants, kids.
So it's, so it's an assessment district essentially paid for the...
They paid for the, they paid for that, maybe that lift station, and then the city puts in the water and sewer, and they slowly pay it back over time. And we have that incentive program, but it's not, not like that, but it, you know, it can be worked into the leases, and that's what would happen down in Harbor on those.
So it's an elevated upfront cost that eventually diminishes to a regular utility, to a regular utility cost?
Mm-hmm. Regular lease cost, yeah, and utility cost, yeah. And I don't remember what those payments were, I mean, it was back in early two thousands, so, but that's how that got all upgraded to nice new water and sewer.
Who, who does the maintenance on the existing harbor building? Harbor employer?
Harbor building? Harbor employees.
Do you have any idea what that's costing you?
Well, I just know that we had over about ten thousand dollars just in all the issues we had with the bathrooms last summer, with whoever that person was.
That was vandalism, I think.
Damnism, but, yeah, so since we, we redid the bathrooms, we have regular maintenance, mostly janitorial, and then we made it so it's kinda almost not quite bulletproof, but you can go in there and hose down the walls.
Well, I, I mean more to what it's costing to maintain an older structure that could be used to support the...
When was it built?
It was built in nineteen sixty-eight?
Well, that's a start.
Sixty-seven, sixty-eight. And it's, and the thing is, is we don't do too much in there, we did remove some walls a few times, different Harbor Masters have different views of the footprint in there, and we, I mean, I moved a couple of doors and a couple of walls, and, but that's pretty much to the extent of it. We did do some upgrades to the heating system, but it just, it was built well, and it's just old.
It was.
We repainted the roof and we...
But when you go in there, I haven't been there a lot, but when you go in there, you know you're going into an older building. It's really, you know, I mean, even Whittier built a new building because of, it's a bunch of maintenance and appearance, but, you know, I said before, making a statement to me that really benefits.
Yeah, so we put that, I come up there, you put that fence around the bottom, because it was all dented in, the metal was all dented in from snow over the years being pushed up. So we just put a little wooden wall up, like a little fence, and it kinda gives a little something, but it's just, you know, it's what we have, and we just gotta maintain it as best we can.
How can we help you move this thing forward, Norm?
Figure out how to move that electric over, so that's a start.
We can just get a bid from electric.
Yep.
And then...
Find out how to fund it.
And then find out how much it is, and then we can have a discussion about that, but that could be a, some, I mean, that's obviously the first step that's holding everything up.
Yeah, and then you can get a price from, once we, and then we can get it platted, you know, once, once the electric move, we get it platted, because we don't, they don't wanna go in there with all that. And then, once that's done, and then work on how many lease spaces you're gonna have, and what's gonna cost the green water and sewer. So the water's right there, too, it's a six-inch main there. Water's right, six-inch main. So everything's there except for the sewage. So then, how much is that little lift station gonna cost? And gravity feed it there, and then push it. So, but that can be added into those lease sites, like I was saying, you know, you can just go back to what they did in two thousand and one, and, two thousand and one, and, you know, when they leased that area, say, okay, hey, you're gonna be paying back the city for your water and sewer hookup, well, every water sewer will be right to that lease site, and then also the lift station.
Does the municipality have the equipment and manpower to reestablish the electric? Is that something the city can do?
Yes, the city can do it, yeah. And when, you wanna touch on when they're starting those, if you've got some new people starting here?
Yeah, so they'll be starting, so the new utility director's starting on April third, officially, but in, in the meantime, I can just go talk to Brian Thrall, who's their shop foreman, and Kari, who's their field engineer, and just say, hey, look, here's what we wanna do, and they can bring us back a pretty good, it's always estimates anyway, they should bring you back a strong estimate, and sometimes it's a little above, and sometimes it's a little bit below that, and then, but at least it gives us a number to start to look at and work with.
And I would probably just suggest that you just abandon what's there in place, so save money, and then just bring in a new one.
Utility director, you mentioned that through the MEA contract, yeah, okay.
So if, if, if you can get the utilities moved as a preliminary activity, a plan towards the future with, you know, that relocation, so that you're supporting not just the boardwalk, but also the Harbor Masters Office. The Harbor Masters Office, let's just pin that at four hundred thousand dollars, and I think it's probably more. But the individual leases that would be available would be at owner's expense.
Correct.
So if that utility was in, that development could proceed, couldn't it?
Correct.
So the council would be able to look at the fact that relocating the utilities would facilitate expansion of leases.
Correct, and then you're gonna have tax income from the building, and then the revenue or tax revenue from sales and all that, so it could definitely increase everything.
Well, and you have new utility consumers as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, Jason, it's the, through the city offices, you're able to come up with just a ballpark of where, where this would go, and then do you need to take the, what, what's the procedure? Do you then go to a vendor, engineer, then come back to the council with the quote, or...
No, I mean, the, our, we can just get a quote from our own utility to move that.
Our, yeah.
Our guys can do that.
Yeah, our, our guys would do that.
Oh, okay, okay, internally.
Internally, yeah, it's totally internal, and so they could just give us a quote for that, and I, I mean, when we can get that, I can bring that back to you guys, just so you guys can see and kind of unders, understand that.
Because it's all city work, that seems like that'd be a fairly inexpensive.
Yeah, electric is obviously like the cheapest thing, you know, any type of utility, that's the cheapest.
Like, the reason for not doing it is not much.
No, probably not.
Well, I guess I'd ask Norm, that's exactly what I wonder, is it, is it the revolving chairs that we've had up till recent times that stalled this thing? Because we've been talking about this for a long time.
We've been talking about moving electric, I know when Harbor Master Ransom was here, it was talked about, and he doesn't know why they put the electric where they did, and I think it was a core thing, because that was owned by the Corps of Engineers for, we can do nothing up there for eight, eight years, ten years, something like that, we can do nothing until the Corps released that property to the city. So I think that's why the electric was put in that location, in my opinion, that's where it was put there for that reason.
Maybe PACAP could do a resolution to encourage council to...
Well, I...
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a call back to you, you guys could do a resolution and encourage them to, to do that as like the first step of the South Harbor uplands development.
You don't have enough to do, but...
Doing that's actually pretty easy, because it's, you just get, just get the quote, and I can bring it back to you guys, and we can do a resolution, that's not very hard at all.
Yeah.
Well, good, that, that's exciting.
I said, once that starts, you'll, you'll get that ball rolling, you know, and then, like I said, figure out what it costs to get all the water and sewer to each location, whatever, the, the lease sites are gonna be key, and where are you gonna bring the water and sewer to, or just have it ready to go, and you can have the out, you know, to go out, and they can come back and dig to it to wherever the owner wants to put it or whatever, but, and then...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just wanna kinda jump back on to what Church Offa just asked. If, if it seems so simple as getting a quote and getting things rolling, what's been preventing it from happening?
Revolving door, so many people coming in and out.
So it is that...
Because I've been, I've been bringing it up about moving the electric over so we could get going on it, and it's just, and then just finding the money to do it, I mean, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, I don't know.
This city's been real good on finding money once they identify a hard, good firm project, and, and I think Jason knows that when he goes down to Juneau or anyplace else, and you, you, both of you, if you've got a firm project in mind, it's a heck lot easier to sell than...
So there's new infrastructure grants coming out that could, you know, possibly...
So additional money from the infrastructure funds that have come to Alaska could possibly be allocated if we could get some of it?
For members of, I'd, I'd like to say that one of the things that I see today is we have the potential stability in our government, in our city government, that has really harmed this city for five or six years, at least five or six years, and it's a shame, but, you know, here's where we are. And I think this board can offer something. What other big problems are in this thing? Oh, I got, the Homer, you, you brought this just as sort of a template, but what is the relative difference in size between, the, the Homer's a lot smaller than Seward, isn't it?
Um, yes and no. They have, the harbor is condensed a little bit more, they're mostly in the larger, but they're going for an expansion right now, but their offices are huge.
Their what?
Offices are huge in their, their new building. They were in a trailer before, so now they're in a, this building is pretty huge, they got a break room for the employees, they got a big boardroom, and then, as long as they have a great front office for the people to come in and they can, you know, places they can sit and wait in line or whatever, and then, you know, good-sized offices for the, you know, folks and, you know, working in there, and, I don't know, footprint, I mean, that's a good, good-sized building, but they also have that where they can, that round part here, so I've been in there, and this is all desk and all screens, and you got cameras all throughout the harbor, so they have like a round thing where all the cameras are at, and that, that's something that Seward needs also. But it don't have to be that big, you can reduce it, it, it's like I said, it's all engineering.
Is that a public space?
No. But if you go to Homer and you talk to Brian Hawkins over there, you like a tour of that, that, that building, he would give you a tour of that building. It is really nice, and when you see that work area with the guys, they also have twenty-four hour, not security, but twenty-four hour presence there, so, and the guys monitor people coming in and out all night long.
Well, I, I would say, I'm all for, one of the groups online, Canadian Mountain Heritage Group, you know, we are exposing kids to places like the baggage box center in, by Portage Glacier, but bringing them down, Seward kids or other kids from other marines, and letting them see the Mariners Memorial, and then touring a really nice Harbor Master Office like this is, is bringing the kids to reality. To me, that's what they've been missing.
So you just did that on Friday?
Oh.
We had a group from Wasilla and then some local kids also that we took around.
And there was somebody from the state that initiated it, and they brought them down, and they're going to different, they're going to Sitka next, I think, and then, but trying to get these kids into the Marine Field, and...
So think about what those little mines would be when they walk through something like that.
Is there any, any thoughts for multi-use rooms or...
Could be, I mean, you know, it'd be nice for a meeting room for whatever, I mean, you can have it off, offset, it could be on the bottom floor, you know, or off top, you could see, you know, kinda like what the Sea Life Center has in that one boardroom. It's a nice board, what's that?
Dunham Company?
Dunham, yeah. We've been in there several times, it's nice sitting in there and you can see out in the bay and, and stuff, and having a good board meeting, so, but that could be done upstairs, you have a nice boardroom upstairs for whatever kind of...
It could be an excellent opportunity, I think.
Have you, you been to the Alaska Airmen's Building on Lakewood?
No.
It's right there on the...
I know where it is, yeah.
And they have a large open room there with events and it's, you know, the exposure is, it's great, it's really wonderful. What are you talking about, what do you think this project, all, the whole development of this South Harbor area is worth?
Oh.
A million bucks?
No, no, more than that, I would think.
I see that it's public right now.
Yeah, I don't know, it'd be a lot, I mean, just, I think just a revenue increase for everything between water, sewer, electric, sales revenue, lease revenue, it's just a big plus for the entire city, you know? And then more businesses can, you know, Mr. Miller might want to put a shop, you know, because he brings folks in. He might want a little shop where people can meet, you know, things like that, or anybody. There's boats, guys just sitting there on their boats, and you know, they tell them to come down to this slip, they don't have a, they don't have a building or, you know. Maybe they might want one, I mean, it's out there, it'll be out there, those things go out, people are going to lease them.
I know Jason's busy, but is it, normally, I would think you develop the anticipated revenue along with your, your cost projection?
You could do it, yeah, I mean, you can also do a revenue bond for this.
No, no, I mean, how much money would your, your leases and utilities generate?
Well, the leases, we could figure out, and you can just find out what they're paying for...
Correct, but that would go into your initial cost?
Good.
And the money was allocated in 2014, so obviously costs have changed since then a little bit, but it was about $2.1 million to pay for that building in 2014.
Not the utility relocation?
No, just the building.
Just to construct the building, that's what they...
2014, you doubled your costs.
Right, yeah.
And it was actually...
Yeah, and that's a really fancy building.
Yeah, that's the date that, it's June 23rd, 2014, is when the city council awarded the contract to Steiner's North Star Construction for $2.1 million for, to build this building, so.
What did our animal shelter cost again? That was...
That was over $2 million.
Well, there you go, there's a model.
So if that was allocated in 2014, is the money still there and ready, waiting to be used?
No, not for us, that's what the Homer...
Yeah, that's from Homer, that's what their council spent to build that in 2014, is when they, that was the price of that building. So it's probably, you're right, it probably has doubled by now, it's about, I would imagine.
So I just want to throw something out there, because you know, that building, it costs a lot of money. So Homer doesn't pay no money into the general fund, where this harbor does. I'm just throwing that out there.
Where's their money go?
They keep it.
And use it for the harbor?
Pretty much.
And they're, they're a balanced budget?
I don't know about that, but all I know is they're, they're trying to do a big expansion, they've been saving up that money to do that harbor expansion.
Oh, good for them.
But they don't pay enough money into the general fund, that's why they had money in there to do that building.
How much does our Harbor Master car?
We pay roughly around... I'm trying to, between the both, it's around $800,000 we pay, or somewhere in there, six, eight hundred.
So are you like a percentage of your revenue goes to the general fund?
Yeah, it's payment, lieu of taxes, and it's eight percent.
Norm, one question I have is, you know, looking at this aerial imagery, I can see there's, you know, upwards of 30 trucks with boat trailers. I assume that, you know, a development's, you know, displaced some of that is...
So if you look at it, most of the vehicles are along the edge, that's where the building's going to be, they're single vehicles, not trailers. But I mean, that's parking, can make angle parking there over the easement, because you can't build on it, so you can do parking though. And then you're going to have all that south, the south side too, and then, like I said, Boulder Field.
Or else even in this area too, you could always do some camping in that area, you can see on that one picture just to the southwest. The southwest, this area right here, that could always be converted to more, right now, it's like it is camping, but it's, you know, you could always convert some of that area.
We all know how parking is, I mean, it's super valuable when it's...
Well, you see in summer, that place is totally packed.
And when it's, when it's not being used, then it's, you know, it seems like a waste of space.
So is that the high-end camping, is that still a consideration for that south?
High-end camping?
Yeah, that's on, parking and transportation.
Yeah, I don't know, they're talking about bringing water, hookups there, but I don't know where they're, I don't know where they're at, probably not.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that that would be at odds with the harbor use, especially on the busy days of summer. But it is in this lay down.
So Vice Chair Spence, I don't know, I think we had some public comment, I don't know if they have any questions or...
Sure, yeah, we'd love to invite citizen comments on the work session topic, the South Harbor Uplands and Harbor Master Office. If you could state your name, and then outside city limits.
My name's Jesse Groom, I live outside city limits. I just heard that we're talking about building a laundromat, the city is talking about building a laundromat?
No, no, it was thought of, and I had talked to your wife about it, and then, but we would not own it. It would be, would go out to RFP for somebody to open one up, so.
So you're wanting to build a laundromat to compete with one of the...
No, no.
No, what it would be is that, in the current harbor facility where it's at right now, they ended up moving the Harbor Masters office. What they'd basically do is they'd basically set aside a space, and then that would have to be for a laundromat, and then allow companies to put in bids to operate a laundromat there, because it's a, it's a need in the harbor. And so the city just doesn't want to have anything to do with, other than just providing the space for that, and they would just put out an RFP for it, so.
That's if somebody wanted to put one in.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but there's one laundromat here in town right now, and it's barely, we barely make it with the city water and the city sewer. And if you put any kind of competition up against us, we will have to close the doors. I mean, we probably would have to close the doors, because as it is right now, we barely can scrape by with the ridiculous water and sewer charges, and now with the electrical charges as they are, you're, you're looking to close down a business that has been running in Seward for 24, almost 24 years. Built from scratch with one washing machine in the back, and built to what it is now. So if you set aside a property just for a laundromat, that someone can come in and open, like a big corporation that owns lots of laundromats all over the state, you're going to run, you're going to run us out of business. And we, we've lived in this town our whole lives. We built that, my wife built that laundromat from scratch, and built it up to what it is now. And with us paying already what we have to pay the city to keep that laundromat open, like you take anywhere from November, December, January, February, we go backwards. We're not making any money. We are paying money out to keep it open for the community. And hearing that the city is now looking to set aside space for another laundromat to open, really, I'm just going to be honest, it hurts our feelings, because we donate for the homeless shelter, we let them come in and wash their clothes for almost nothing. The service that we provide the city is, it makes me sick thinking about that the city is really thinking about doing something like this, because...
Okay, I'll touch on that real quick. So it was a suggestion that was a long time ago, when we started this process, a suggestion for a laundromat for the people who own, to come in on the boats, not to take away from any of the talent, but I understand what you're saying, it was just a suggestion.
The cruise ships is what makes us be able to keep the doors open year-round. If we lost the cruise ship business to another laundromat closer in the harbor, like I said, we would bolt up and we'd be gone.
Okay, so it was a suggestion by somebody that, when we initially started this, and it's just for vessels in the harbor, not for, but, it was a suggestion that it'd be a good spot for one. And, yeah, I believe I talked to your wife a while back, a long time ago about it, and then, about maybe satellite down there. I don't know, it's just a suggestion.
So if I might, Jesse, I think this, you and Desiree have spoke to us before, and I think we're all aware of the situation, and there's nobody here that wants to put a local business out. And we've all worked towards trying to understand the difficulties that you guys are facing. This is, this is a place marker, this may not even happen as a laundromat. And I think your comment should stay in the public awareness, in this board's awareness. But the truth is, you guys could be the operator of this and have two facilities. It may be more than you want to do, but I mean...
It's hard enough right now to keep the doors open on one, and then now, now we have to buy another $150,000 in equipment for what, to open a second building for three months out of the, like, it's unreasonable. And not even that, but now we have a second water and a second sewer and a second electrical charge that we could barely keep up with right now. And you put in a place marker for a laundromat, you're going to get someone from Anchorage that owns 15 laundromats all over the state, they're going to come down and open up a laundromat, and they're going to put us out of business.
I think it'd be fair to just take that off the whole thing, you know, just, because it does compete with the local business, and they already like fulfill the need, you know, more than enough, like, you know, like they're getting all the business right now, and it's still not enough, so.
We can, we can...
Just take it off the plan altogether, just wipe it off the table.
Was that in the plan, or was that just a...
It was a suggestion.
It was just a suggestion, but we can make sure it's not in the plan.
Because there's no need to cause that undue stress or...
Yeah, no, I understand.
And for, you know, for the record, that is not, that, the repurposing of that old Harbor Master office is not part of our discussion today. That, those are just thoughts that have been aired in this forum, so your, your feedback is extraordinarily valuable for the committee. The, there is no current plan, as I understand it, correct?
Correct. I understand that, and like, this is not just this one time we've sat here, I've had many conversations with the, the ex-mayor Christie about the laundromat and the water tariffs, and I had heard about four or five years ago, we had heard about four or five years ago about the city wanting to open a laundromat up on the waterfront for the campers. And we came and talked to council members, and anybody that would listen and said, you guys are putting us out of business. We cannot compete, especially with the city, because the city doesn't have to pay the water in the sewer that we pay, or the electricity. So we, there is no competing with the city in that department. We are already barely, we make nickels on washers and dryers because of the amount of money that we have to pay the city to keep the doors open. And like I said, we lose money four or five months out of the year, we're going backwards, we're not going forward. And these are the things that we do to provide a service for this community, and it's disheartening to hear that the city is looking to put a, just a placeholder for another person to come in and take over our business. When we have to pay the city taxes, we own our building, we're already stretched so thin that we barely, the doors are barely open, as it is. Like, we've had serious discussions about closing it for six months out of the year, because we are going, we're going backwards on it. And if you, if the city allows, not allows, if somebody, if a private person wanted to come in and buy a lot like we had, and buy a building and put a laundromat in, so be it, that's fair, that is what competition's about. But for the city to actually set aside property and say, this is for a laundromat, like I said, you guys, it will be the end of Southern's world, it will be the end of Southern's world, because we cannot compete to that.
So Jesse, yeah, just, in terms of your business overhead, is it, is it the water, is it the electric? What is it that I can bite at here?
It's the water and the sewer, and now the electric.
Mostly the water.
Mostly the water.
Mostly the water and the sewer, and if, if, sorry, he could get here sooner than I can. But, and especially like if the city opened a laundromat just for the peak season, that would be detrimental. Because that is what holds me up to where I can keep it open for the city of Seward through the winter. If I get, you know, if I lost that revenue from the summer, if there was something in the harbor, that would be detrimental to be able to keep it open year-round for all the locals, because that's what keeps me, you know, that's, what keeps me afloat in the winter to be able to keep it open.
If I could, just follow up a question, your water rates remain the same year-round?
Correct.
They don't fluctuate?
But every few years, we have to come to the council and battle the council, because they want to throw us in the bracket with the Sea Life Center and Icicle Seafoods. And if they had, if the council ever makes that decision to where we have to be in that upper tier, that would be another one that would close the doors in Southern's world. Like, our water is not sewer water, it's, it's laundry wa, you know, and I don't understand why we have to pay so much for the sewer part of it, when it's pretty much water and soap, and a little bit of dirt going down the drain, and yet, we pay, you don't even want to see our water and sewer bill.
Well, it would make it unaffordable for people to, people already struggle in town, to raise the laundry cost for people to do laundry, like, yeah, I could raise my rates, but it's already expensive, and I don't want to raise my rates, I want to keep it, you know, for people to be there, and that would be important.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, one is, the city won't open one, we're not going to open one, but we're going to remove that laundromat. Whenever that comes up with a building, comes up to do what, to do with the building, definitely need to shop, and new showers and stuff, and then...
That's a long ways from...
It's a long ways, it's, 10, 20 years out, but I think we just, we just keep it out, keep the laundromat part out a bit. It was, like I said, it was just a suggestion years ago, that, I don't know who suggested it, but that's where it's just been.
I am quite interested in the, your effects on the utility rates and sewer and water, that's a discussion that this board has, has had many times. I work at the Sea Life Center, you mentioned that, the utilities are, it's, it's tops on the list of military concerns. There is, you know, we are in an expensive place to live, there's no question, and the services cost a lot of money, but I think just, you know, having that awareness of how that affects local businesses is an important thing. And also the seasonality of it, I think, is a, that's a really good point. We appreciate those comments.
Absolutely. And Norm has my phone number, any, any one of you that has any questions, feel free to reach out. We will easily sit down and have, have a conversation with any...
Thanks, we appreciate, we do appreciate you guys coming and talking to us about that, and like I said, we don't know, it was, it was all a suggestion, but we will, we'll remove it, and we're happy to do so, and appreciate what you guys do in our, in our community, because we know that's a really important resource for all kinds of people. So we do appreciate you guys doing that.
I appreciate you guys listening, and...
Oh, no, I, so, need to understand, this is a work session today, I don't know what notes, minutes do we keep? The clerk, do you keep notes at all of this?
Yeah, I'm taking work session notes, and I'll be on legislative history.
So the five of us that are here now will remember this conversation. And just like many of the other things that are owned by the city of Seward, and those of us that work in the city of Seward, we can practice a little protectionism, even though it may not be high on the flagpole, but it's true. And, you know, this is not the first time we realize that the laundry has some serious problems, and it's an economically important and socially important thing for the community.
Absolutely.
And I don't think this discussion was intended, and I don't think you should think that the city was trying to, to establish of something in competition to you. As a matter of fact, when I first got here earlier today, that came up, and, you know, it was clearly going to be a private activity, not a city activity. But removing it completely, we'll take our memories.
Take it off the table.
I appreciate you guys' time, and I appreciate you guys listening, thank you, thank you very much.
I heard a comment, like Ben said.
If anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out anytime.
Put the question right behind you.
He was closer and quicker. Thanks.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got another space to fill?
That's fine, I mean, I, it was, like I said, it was, I don't know, we could probably go back to the minutes from way back when we started this, and I, you might even say who said it.
It was the same concern then too.
Correct.
There was the same concern about a constellation, competing.
Can't, the city can't compete with private business, that's why the city was going to do it.
But I don't think there was ever really an intention for the city to subsidize a private business. But it sure could appear like that, so.
I think it would be safe to say that there's going to be a lot of discussion if that Harbor Master office is repurposed, what would go there?
When the Harbor Master office moves over, and then it will come to what do you, what to do with that property, the old Harbor Master office. It would come back before you guys to discuss what to do with their own property. And I suggest that they keep the shop for the harbor crew, but the rest of it, an awning, who knows, restrooms, showers.
Could be like any other leased property, somebody leases it and decides to do whatever they want there.
I think we need to keep the public space for restrooms and showers there, and then a covered place for people to stand waiting for the buses.
One of the prior recommendations from board member Paquette was a large cupboard area for gatherings, so. area for gatherings, but I, I think that was a good discussion on the use of city facilities, but I, I would think that would deserve its own special work session when the time should-
Oh yeah, and when it comes up.
Additional citizen comments?
Yeah. Becky Dunn, Inside the City, I'm turning in an application to join you guys.
All right.
Cool.
That's the way to do it, yeah.
There you go. And I'm, I'm looking at this packet that was over there, and I was kind of confused, I'm going, "What?" That, this is a blast from the past, there's city council, there's Willard Dunham on here, Betsy Keller, Bob Vada.
Yeah.
So this has been started and then in the works for quite a while, oh, there's four different friends on here that have passed away. Anyway, so, but opening up the packet, I can see that if I join them, I'm going to have to get a magnifying glass, because even with my $1,000 bifocals, I can't read half this. So, and I might have saw me writing a note and passing it to her as we're speaking, I said, "Do you offer showers?", just so that it's on the table, the laundromat does not offer showers. That is something that I've utilized before, and the Harbor Master got quite, the office got quite used to me because I am apparently too short to turn on their lights in the room when I jump up and down and wave it out even, so I'd have to go in and get them to turn on the lights when, when I had an issue with my septic. So that's one thing I'm not complaining about raising, that the septic or the sewer went up a little bit, water on my bill, but I've had to replace the septic system unexpectedly when I lived outside the city, and that was no fun. So that's about all I have to say right now, besides I have been airing the meetings and listening to them. I had a question, is this, this is on YouTube right now, isn't it?
That is correct.
Okay, so, anybody can view back what was on YouTube. Okay, and so I did ask her, the showers and anything else I asked her, she already covered. But I think that we could use more showers because there is often a wait for showers, and the showers, I will say, have improved greatly from when I was bartending and had to use them when I was in my early twenties. They are much cleaner, I'm not stepping on cigarette butts anymore, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for your application.
There's also one more that's out there, hint, hint, if you're listening.
Do we have any further discussion on this plan? Do we have an action item for Jason, and an action item for Paquette?
So we get that price, we get it back before you, and then you can get the resolution and figure out how we can find it to get that moved and get, get going.
Okay. Do we want to do board administrative comments, or?
I did have one comment that I wanted to make in regards to our scheduled item for April 3rd, and originally it was the utility infrastructure, but because of the way things got shifted, that will, that will be like Brian Hickey's first day with the utility staff, and so I don't think that's going to be a good time for him to come in and speak on that day, let's give him some time to get his bearings over there, and so I'd like to postpone that one, and then I know, I believe that there's some other items that could easily be placed in there as far as housing goes. Mr. Clerk, are there any like official actions that need to be taken for that meeting to change the topic of that, unless previously scheduled, or will just publicly noticing it be enough?
Yeah, that would be fine, just to publicly notice it.
Great.
Without objection from the board, I guess we can shift that meeting.
Comments? Go around the room, Norm?
Nope, thank you for the folks coming in, and I understand where they're at, and it's good we remove that from the, you know, from the future, so, yeah, and then like I said, we'll just figure out the next step after we get that price.
I don't have any comments about the Harbor Master or anything like that, I think it's off-topic, but it would be interesting to like see if a business like the laundromat could get a break on, because I don't think they have a public restroom there, if I remember right, it's been a minute since I used it, but you know, since it is all gray water, especially if they, you know, for them to be paying a lot of money for gray water seems kind of, you know, that there'd be an opportunity there to like cut them a break on it, because they are kind of the only game in town right now with it, and it is something that if they went under the town would definitely feel it, but I don't, I don't know.
No, that's, that's fine, that's something you guys can bring up in another meeting.
Yeah.
You guys can draft up a resolution, you want to bring it before council.
No, I will go ahead and bring that cost back to you guys, and talk to Courtney in community development, and we'll, we'll work with just kind of getting some things in play for, as far as pre-plating goes, and some ideas on that front. Courtney and Danny there, and then we'll just talk to Doug too about listations, and just kind of have some ideas and pieces, put those in place to make things go, so they're ready when they need to.
Sounds good. Tony?
No comment, I think you guys touched on it on everything. Sounds like a great plan moving forward.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with for costs, see what you can do to help move this project forward. As, as Becky said, there's a lot of, a lot of names in here that, you know, this is starting a long time ago, and that's why I was like, why, why are we still talking about those? Why haven't we seen anything done? So look forward to seeing something move forward.
Absolutely. Jane?
Thank you, yeah, so this has been a good conversation today, and I'm excited, I think we have an idea of what to do next, we have an action agenda item, thank you, Jason. And then I encourage that we have members of the public who are interested in joining the board, and that's always useful, because the more voices and minds we have, the more, the more we get done. And anyway, I think it's a better productive meeting.
Yeah, thank you Vice Chair Smith for filling the role today, and I apologize for being a little bit late. The, the discussion is one that I am surprised took so long, and I, I'm glad we're moving it forward, and I think we need to keep the momentum up on something like this. I think it's somewhat unfortunate to start this late, after, actually at the end of Norm's chairmanship or directorship, but when it gets done, it'll have a big part of Norm in it, and hopefully Tony can be, help us carry it through. The citizen comments, I think are awesome. I'm glad that Becky put her application in, but she reminded me that we do have a broader audience sometimes than just the people that are here, and I think that's great. I don't care to play for that audience, I think it's right here that we're talking about, but I think we're trying to do something for the community, and as a community watches, you know, they're our shepherd. So along with that, on April 3rd, I have invited Tim Jagalski from Jag Shipyard, and Nicole Lawrence from her realty company, who's going to, she'll update the information that she provided to us, that we saw at the last meeting, and Tim will speak about what he's doing for housing and the need for housing. I hope that we can continue with those kinds of housing discussions, and ultimately provide a report to council before we go on hiatus. And that report, I would hope, would give us, give them some observations about what the stakeholders in the housing issue have to say about the things.
Thank you, that was well said. The, the comments about citizen involvement, I think it really does underscore how a board like this can cede changes that will hap, you know, maybe it'll be 10, 20 years from now, but those comments will carry on and hopefully serve the needs of the citizens of Seward in a productive way, and I think that's, it's fascinating to watch this in action. So, appreciate that. The utility concerns, I, I think that's, that's another thing that this board continues, needs to continue to revisit, there's not much that we're going to do about it, but figuring out how to navigate that landscape of, right, in a very expensive place to live overall, I think, is a good use of our time, and I hope that's, that's something we can continue to do. Other than that, thanks everybody for a full, full board and fuller board at some point soon, hopefully, so, without objection, we adjourn this work session.